Want to call the city council meeting to order? Uh, can we get someone to close the back doors? We appreciate it. Crystal Welch, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent prayer meditation. Thank you. Melody, would you do a roll call, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Present.
Councilman Curry.
Here.
Councilwoman King.
Here.
Councilwoman Michler. Councilman Fish.
Here.
Councilwoman Hines.
Here.
Councilman Crabtree.
Present.
Councilman Hinky. President Dawson.
Present. Just a reminder to make sure you're speaking to the microphone and your cell phones are turned off or on vibrate or on silent. Could we have a motion for approval of the minutes of October sixteenth, twenty twenty five, finance committee meeting of the whole?
So move.
The twenty two hundred and six budget hearing. Again, a motion from Mr. Crabtree, a second from Mrs. Hines. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Can I get a motion for the approval of the minutes for October twentieth, twenty twenty five council meeting?
So move.
Got a motion by Mr. Crabtree, second by Mr. Hines. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. No unfinished business. Presentations or introductions? Do we have anything for the administration? All right. Reports of council committees. Uh, there are none. Ordinance on second reading. Would you please disordinate by title, please?
Proposed ordinance twenty five dash O dash thirty six. An ordinance amending the zoning map created pursuant to ordinance number four three seven zero, the zoning ordinance of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, as amended to rezone vacant land located at in the six hundred block of Mishawaka Street, Elkhart, Indiana, four six five one four, from M dash one limited manufacturing district to R dash three two family dwelling district.
Thank you. Can I get a motion in a second to adopt this ordinance?
So move. Back in.
Mr. Crabtree, second by Mr. Fish. Council discussion. Um, we have, we have Mr. Trotter coming, maybe?
Good evening. Eric Trotter of the planning department. Um, we have this evening a rezoning request on uh, Mishawaka Street, uh, the north side, um, from M one to R three. The staff supported it. The plan commission approved it unanimously.
Louder.
I'm sorry. I've been sick. Is that better?
I don't know if we can get the I I I T guy to turn that mic up. It doesn't sound very loud. Does anybody?
Do I need to start? How is this?
Not very, yeah. It's not you. I think it's the mic.
Yeah, it's on. So.
Continue best you can, Eric.
Sorry. Again, Eric Trotter from the planning department. Um, we have a rezoning request this evening, uh, on the north side of Mishawaka Street between Edward'sburg and Michigan, uh, from M one to R three. The staff supported it. It was passed unanimously at plan commission to you all this evening, and we're excited to see some redevelopment in that area.
Mr. Fish, I think you had a question.
Yes, um, so as I was looking through here, nice looking building, um, I I think it'll add to the quality of living, of course, um, but I'm concerned about the tightness of the building versus the lot. How much have we got on each side of the building?
There will be two duplexes as there are two platted lots, and they will meet our development standards for each property.
Okay, so with aesthetically, it won't be jammed up against the other properties.
No, they're narrow, but they're long.
Okay.
And then arc off the platted alley in the back.
Okay, thank you.
Mm hmm. Any other questions, Mr. Trotter, Mr. Hinky?
Uh, would you just review again, uh, the type of building that is going in that location?
There are two duplexes. There are two side by side, um, duplexes. So there'll be two actual structures, and then the parking will be in the rear. There there. It's one parcel, but there are two platted lots, so we'll be able to split those back out into two parcels uh, that match the or the reflect the platted lots, and they'll be parking in the back.
So is there a lower, um, I realize it's M one now. Could it not be an R one, R two?
Well, the R three matches the neighborhood to the north and east. It's all R three around it.
And I I just wondered what was all allowed in an R three? Of course, they would have to come back if they were going to add on.
Yeah, what's permitted in R three are are single family and duplex units.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Fish.
So the other question, um, about the alley, are are there any, uh, improvements needed for for safety, uh, easement?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay, um, and the developers are are happy with the quality of that?
I would imagine so, yes.
Okay, very good.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Trotter. I'll open up to the public. Now, is anyone in the public who would like to speak with regards to this ordinance, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask Melody to do a roll call vote on second reading, please.
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Council, uh, Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hinky.
Aye.
President Dawson.
Aye.
Third and final.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Crabtree, second from Mr. Fish. Would you read this by title and do a roll call vote, please?
Proposed ordinance twenty five dash O dash thirty six, an ordinance amending the zoning map created pursuant to Zorn- ordinance number four three seven zero, the zoning ordinance of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, as amended to rezone vacant land located in the six hundred block of Mishawaka Street, Elkhart, Indiana, four six five one four, from M dash one limited manufacturing district to R dash three two family dwelling district. Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hinky.
Aye.
President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes eight to one.
Thank you. Would you read proposed ordinance twenty five dash O dash thirty seven by title, please?
Proposed ordinance dash or or proposed ordinance twenty five dash O dash thirty seven, an ordinance amending the zoning map pursuant to the ordinance number four three seven zero, the zoning ordinance of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, as amended to rezone vacant land situated on Vernon Avenue, east of Greenleaf Boulevard, from R dash one, one family dwelling district, to R dash two, one family dwelling district.
Thank you. I get a motion in a second to adopt this ordinance.
So moved.
A motion at this time, second by Mr. Fish. Council discussion.
Were there?
Uh, wait on, I think we'll get get Eric up here because he's going to be able to answer your question.
And for all the letters that went out, Eric, um, what was the feedback we had regarding resistance to this change?
Introduce yourself again, Eric, for the record. Eric Trotter, planning department.
We had twenty six letters go out and two returned not in favor.
And they specified what they disapproved of?
No, they did not.
Any other questions, Mr. Trotter?
Nope.
Saying none. Thank you, Eric. I'll open to the public at this time. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak on this ordinance? Saying none, we turn it back to the council floor. Melody, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hinky.
Aye.
President Dawson.
Aye.
Eight to zero.
Third and final.
Back in.
For Mr. Crabtree, second for Mrs. Hines, the third and final. Would you please read it by title and do a roll call vote, please?
Proposed ordinance twenty five dash O dash thirty seven, an ordinance amending the zoning map pursuant to ordinance number four three seven zero, the zoning ordinance of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, as amended to rezone a vacant land situated on Vernon Avenue, east of Greenleaf Boulevard, from R dash one, one family dwelling district, to R dash two, one family dwelling district. Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hinky. President Dawson.
Aye.
Eight to zero.
Thank you. There are no ordinances or resolutions referred to committee. There are no table ordinances. New business. Would you please read ordinance on first reading, proposed orders twenty five dash O dash thirty eight by title, please?
Proposed ordinance twenty five dash O dash thirty eight, an ordinance annexing certain real estate, commonly known as the Prairie Street Cemetery, including two adjacent parcels south along the cemetery's eastern boundary, and declaring the same to be part of the city of Elkhart, Indiana.
If there are obje- objections, I'll pass this on to second reading. We're going resolutions. Would you please read proposed resolution twenty five, twenty five dash R dash thirty eight by title, please?
Resolution twenty five dash R dash thirty eight, a resolution of the common council of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, adopting a written fiscal plan to define a policy for the provision of services to the area known as the Prairie Street Cemetery, including two adjacent parcels south along the cemetery's eastern boundary, a proposed annexation area.
I get a motion in a second to adopt this resolution.
Second.
All right, I got a a motion from Mr. Fish, second from Mrs. Hines. Adopt this resolution. Council discussion.
I have.
Mr. Fish.
A question. Um, Eric could probably answer this question. We're trying to get your exercise steps in today. And and I'm just going to ask this here, um, because it's it came up to me, a question about fencing around cemetery. Do we have specifics about what type of fencing we're allowed to do, or will it be? The question was to me, will it be a solid fence, or will it be a rail fence or a chain link?
Eric Trotter Planning, I'm not sure that that has been determined.
Okay, okay. I'll take care of it from here, then. I'll answer the question and have them maybe send a request in or maybe show up and ask that question. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for the council? Seeing none, uh, open up to the public. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on this resolution? Seeing none, we turn it back to the council. Further council discussion. Seeing none. Melody, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hinky. President Dawson.
Aye.
Eight to zero.
Xander, that's a that's a fine. Xander?
Yes.
That's a fine. Yes, yes. All right. City attorney will tell you where to pay that fine at. Okay, vacation hearings. There are none. Other new business, other new business. Mr. Hinky.
Um, just of note, um, I did have a board member, uh, for Tolson let me know that they had sufficient funding to be self-funding for some time. I was promised some time ago a, um, budget update, and I have yet to receive it. Uh, equally, I was promised a city cash account, um, listing, and I have yet to receive that one. And then I wanted to go over Board of Public Safety, October thirteenth, there was a request for ninety nine thousand nine hundred seventy nine dollars seventy one cents for fourteen Motorola radios, and, um, I would have thought that that would have been in the budget since we were so close there, so I don't know if this is an afterthought or what happened there and where those dollars will be coming from. Um, also, I had a concern, but I I don't claim to know, but there's an S R O rifle being suggested for or there's a rifle being suggested for the, um, S R O officer at our schools. And then more importantly, Board of Public Works, October seven twenty five. It's it's just bizarre to me that we still find people. It's costing us, you know, the two hundred and fifty dollar fine for, um, wastewater discharges violations, two hundred and fifty dollars, and that's hardly enough to even. And that's hardly enough to even cover the meeting, the salaries of the people conducting the meeting, let alone the actual work to get this done. Ottawa Township Sewer District, $500. You look at Garminehart exceeded the established local permit for mercury. Mercury takes 50 to 100 years to dissolve, and we charge them $500. And it just seems like, you know, $500 is your second noise ordinance fine. That's the equal. So it seems like we're very much behind the eight ball on getting real action, traction here. The fines are so low, it's probably cheaper to pollute than it is to do it correctly. So I'm just putting up that concern, $500 for mercury.
Thank you. Any other new business reports?
Oh, Mr. President.
I'm sorry, Mr. Crabtree.
I just wanted to remind everyone, two things, specifically with the brush pickup gone. It's now leaf pickup season. Put your leaves to the road, not in the road, please. I've seen a number of people putting their leaves in the road. Make sure, system's going in and out. Making sure that your drains are cleared for when it does rain, those drains can drain effectively off the roadway. Also, I want to announce or make a note of Turkey Stampede is coming up Thursday, November 27th, Thanksgiving Day. It's a tradition here in Michiana. There's a 10K, a 5K run, 5K walk, and a one-mile fun run. I would encourage and challenge all my colleagues to join me that day, whether they're running, walking, or volunteering. I'm volunteering, I'm not running. Entry fees do go to Faith Mission of Michiana, which help feed and house those in need in our area. And during these current times, nothing is more effective and more important than that. So more information, turkeystampede.com. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Crabtree. Mayor.
Thank you. Couple things. Good evening, council. First of all, I'd like to, I know that there have been a few disaster relief efforts that we all know that Councilman Michler has left the country in order to serve in each of them. I'd like to formally extend a sincere, our sincere gratitude for Councilman Michler's leadership and compassion as he assists in this latest disaster relief effort in Jamaica. He is actually with Heart to Heart International, and Aaron has been very dedicated to helping communities in times of crisis. Reflects the spirit of servant leadership. His commitment in humanitarian aid, both at home and abroad, serves as a reminder of the power, I guess this mic is a little, I guess we have to figure that one out.
That's better, we can hear you much better. I don't know if you can hear yourself, but we, much better.
Am I projecting? Remember the power of compassion and action in the face of hardships. And I just want to make sure that the city recognizes his effort here and the other efforts that he's made in order to make sure that he was included in the serving of others around the world in relationship to disaster relief. Second item. Jeff Savansky, would you join me?
Good evening. In April of 2025, the common council adopted resolution R1225. It was a resolution to create a climate city, a climate resilient city of Elkhart. The resolution committed to identifying a sustainability officer who will coordinate with residents and community partners, explore grant opportunities through various state, local, and federal programs. I'm pleased to inform you that I've selected Jeff Savansky, Director of the Elkhart Environmental Center, as our sustainability officer. As a part of his role beginning in 2026, we will work with him to tackle a few of the following. And I'll allow Jeff to talk a little bit about the responsibility of the, of those items that he plans to tackle. That fine, Jeff?
Thank you, Mayor. Myself and my team at the Environmental Center.
Introduce yourself.
Jeff Savansky, Director of the Elkhart Environmental Center. We look forward to this new role and are excited about it and the challenges that will come with it. As the mayor said, as we work to develop our climate action plan in the next year, year and a half, we'll be working with the different departments that are out there to see what new ways we can find that's a little bit more sustainable, more energy efficient that we could do going forward. There, there isn't a person in this room that hasn't looked at their energy bill this year and just wonder what's going on. Whether I'm using less, costing more, or using the same, costing a lot more. And the city is not exempt from that. So anything that we can do now going forward will help the city with its climate action goals and ultimately help us with our energy costs, saving taxpayers money as we go forward. So this is going to be about a year and a half process, and we'll be working with all the departments that are out there. And I'm confident that we can, we can find some new ways going forward.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff.
One final issue I'd like to address. The city is issuing a call to action to help local households following the prospect of losing the much-needed benefits from the Supplemental Nutritional Assistance Program, known as SNAP. At the state level, approximately 619,000 Hoosiers receive SNAP benefits. Locally, nearly 15,000 households in Elkhart County rely on SNAP to meet their basic needs, and of those, 69% are multifamily member households. Community food pantry partners are anticipating a dramatic surge in demand. Projections from the county foundation of Elkhart County estimate four to eight times increase in client traffic if the SNAP benefits are reduced or eliminated. As a part of this city's response, Elkhart community, we're asking members to step up in a couple of ways. We want you to look at donating financially, and if you could go to hungerinshare, I'm sorry, hungerendshere.com. It's all one word. Double WWW, hungerendshere.com. And that's on the foundation's website as well, so you can find it there. And then we will also be staging a food drive for non-perishable food items to be dropped off here at City Hall. We will be making a actual press release that will go out tomorrow and with the coordinated items in each of those categories, both the donations physically or financially, as well as the fiscal items here to the, to City Hall. We just want to make sure to let you know that our neighbors here in Elkhart will need our support as well. And removing a benefit that comes to rely on puts too many families at risk. We need to do something that our community does well. Pull together and support ourselves. So please look in for, please look for more information very soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Neighborhood Association reports. I know the 5th district met yesterday.
That's right. Okay, yeah, the Pima Ran Neighborhood Association, we met yesterday at the Pima Ran Park Pavilion. It was another good meeting, and people had a lot of stuff on their mind. They wanted to know about all the projects that's going on around the city, when all the streets going to open up. They wanted to, they talked about the toasting events that's coming up, talked about 311. They talked about trash pickup. And then we talked about the leaf pickup. As Councilman Chad Crabtree has mentioned, that we talked about not putting the leaves in the street. Some, they talked about some of the pets in the neighborhood, how we handling those. And we were blessed to have Ms. Edgerton at the, at the meeting. And she, of course, she talked about education and the way it used to be and how we can fix today's concerns with education. And we all agreed that maybe we just need to bring her out of retirement to straighten things out. But it was a good meeting.
All this, Ms. Edgerton?
Pardon me?
Ms. Edgerton is 90, what?
90, just 90.
Just turned 90.
Just 90.
Going to bring her out of retirement. Okay, Brett. Natania, Ms. King.
Wednesday, November 5th, Tolson, starting at 5:30. The 6th district would be having an end-of-the-year neighborhood meet and greet, and there will be food and beverage, and all are welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, neighborhood reports. Seeing none. Members of the floors, anyone in the audience who would like to speak on anything that was not on agenda, please sign in, step forward. Give us your name.
Delvin Foy, 30590 North Shore Drive. Here we are again, two years to the day, and I brought up seven properties that needed attention. Your high school grade is an F for the last two years, everyone up here. You school types know what that is, not a good look. Seven properties have now been touched. I'll add another two properties to the group. The one out by the Hawkins Water that you guys approved for an apartment complex hasn't been touched all year. I guess they get a pass since they're providing housing. Another is a Bristol Street reconstruction, all the way out Bristol Street. I've got a lot of friends that live out that way, and the grass is four foot tall. I've been mowed all year. I would think somebody, I know we got mower attachments that can take care of that. Got a call from one of my clients that received a threatening notice to mow, even though he sold the property two years ago. Checked the current tax records, new owner's names on it. So I'm questioning you guys, what source is the city using for updated contacts? I mean, I'm a real estate agent, and I know the tax records are current. But he got a threatening letter, and they told him if he didn't mow it within two weeks, he'd get charged for it. Last but not least, I received a rude phone call from a person in zoning, and it was not Eric. Mr. Foy, do you have the property listed, 1727 Luxor? I said, yes, I do. You're going to have a hard time selling that property because of all the liens and zoning violations. I said, what specifically are you referring to? He said, the damaged fence on the corner. He didn't know who to contact, but I'm going to have a problem selling that property. I said, yes, we are aware, and called the fence company four times. Sounds like you need to have another fence company called. Not once in 45 years in the real estate business, if I've been contacted by the city or anyone else, ask, how can we help you get this vacant property sold? I might add that the property taxes being paid are up to date. $15,700 a year they pay. I could have gotten smart aleck with him and said, you think maybe calling the police department and getting the police report? Because it's actually the car owner's responsibility, once he hits that fence. And I'm sure with the damage to the fence, there was a police report probably filed. Since then, the fence has gotten taken care of. Alls he would have had to do is ask me for a name, and I would have provided it. I'm sure the police. Still having a problem with the homeless. I've got a building next door that's, the bottom level's been set and empty for two years now. Loss of $50,000 out of my pocket, loss of rent. Just had a theft over the weekend beside the building. Something turned up missing. I don't know what else to say. I hope some of these things get addressed. I probably won't be up here again. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Ralph Sprowbridge. I've lived, lived out on Bank Street for about five decades. This can be a frightening time of the year with Halloween and elections. Sometimes the election results are really disappointing. The shirt I'm wearing for Blue Jays, I believe this is the only Blue Jays high school in the state of Indiana. It's in Stark County. I'd like to comment, I think this large print red is an improvement over what it used to be. Down below, nobody in Bargo Township lived within the city limits at one time. Now the city limits even cross County Road 17. That's five miles. So I, I think that people should be allowed at least five minutes. The Elkhart Truth doesn't publish near as many letters now as it did before the pandemic or 10 years ago or 20 years ago. I have here the city council map, and I've written, it's addressed to you, Mr. President, District 1, Elkhart City Council, after 2020 census.
Make sure you're speaking to the mic, Mr. Seber.
Has a creative council award win. Notice District 1 has a middle finger shape. See, this is the shape of the district. That's kind of unusual. I don't know how you come up.
Thank you, miss, thank you, thank you. Addressed, addressed the council, not the audience.
Anyhow, that, wanted to point that, point that out. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Where are we?
Anybody else?
Anybody else? Okay. Scheduling of committee meetings. The scheduling of committee meetings, the limited meetings, acceptors of communication.
So move.
Got a motion by Mr. Crabtree, second by Mrs. Hines, accept communication. All those in favor signify by saying aye.[1778.55]